Can we go?
Oh, Justin's paying attention.
Yes. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Zoning Design Review Board for July 14, 2014. Sandra, shall we start with a call to order, please? Roll call.
Yes. Vice Chair Scoggins.
Present.
Member Laz.
Present.
Chair Durham.
Present. And now we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And moving forward, we'll move to adopt the agenda. Any changes or modifications from anyone? Seeing none, motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. And we'll move to the approval of the minutes from the May 13 meeting. Any changes or modifications to that, those minutes? No. Seeing none, shall we make a motion to adopt the minutes from May 13?
I wasn't present at that meeting, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No.
Member Laz? Any changes or anything? No? You want to make a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Very good, so...
Very technical.
And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Very good. Then we shall move to public comment. Anybody in the audience for something not on the agenda today? Seeing none, we will move forward to the consent calendar, which there are no items. That will bring us to number seven, public hearing. So we shall start with the Clopton residents, which I, before we start, would like to apologize for the confusion last week and greatly appreciate everybody coming to this special meeting this evening. So thank you very much. With that being said, we shall move forward with design review of 6743 Jefferson Street. Sandra?
I think there are two announcements.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you, there are two announcements. One, this address, 6743 Jefferson Street, is within my sphere of conflict and given the three of us here tonight and in order to move the project forward, I will stay on. So I wanted to note that. And Chair Person Laz?
The same for me and I'll stay on as well.
Thank you.
All right.
So moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening. So tonight you have before you the proposed redevelopment of the vacant lot that's at the northwest corner of Jefferson and Pedrone Streets. And that property was previously developed with a single-family residence, a detached garage with an attached granny unit. But both structures have recently been demolished from the site to prepare it for construction. So the applicant proposes a 1,514 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, and you can see that in the site plan here. A 400-square-foot, one-story detached two-car garage and a 300-square-foot second dwelling unit. And the house is situated up front facing Jefferson and Pedrone, while the garage and second dwelling are tucked on the west side of the property with access from Pedrone. The main residence, let me just go through these different slides. Here's another site plan, and here are the elevations. The main residence is a two-story structure with shingle siding, a standing seam metal roof, and Napa stone on the base of building. Features a large front porch that will wrap around the east and south elevations with a balcony above on the west-east elevation and a trellis on the south elevation. Other details of the design are symmetrically placed French doors, a fireplace and chimney on the east elevation, and selected use of vertical wood siding to complement the shingle siding, which is the predominant exterior building material. The north elevation, which faces an interior property line, will feature a step-back height with two one-story elements to either side of the stairwell. Originally, the applicant had proposed the garage and second dwelling shown here, and it had unconditioned attic space over the garage that was accessed through a pull-down stairwell or ladder. The height of that portion of the building was 20 feet, and it failed to meet the side and rear yard setbacks for a building over 18 feet, which requires that rather than being the five feet for the 15-foot building, it needs to be 20 for the rear and eight for the side. So the applicant has subsequently modified the design to move the location of the taller unconditioned storage space element. And you see an illustration here of that proposal. And what that does is increase the second dwelling that's to the right of the garage from approximately 12 feet to approximately 19 feet. And again, it will serve as unconditioned storage space, access from a pull-down ladder or stairwell, and it won't be part of the living space of the property. What this design achieves is the minimum setbacks required for the garage at five feet based on the elevation. The garage portion of the building will be sited in wood shingle, while the second dwelling portion will be clad in Napa stone. And so similar features as used on the main dwelling are used here. The main dwelling and the garage second dwelling, the main roof lines will feature a pitch of eight and 12, and there are selected lower shed roofs at seven and 12 and three and 12. The primary dwelling will reach a height of 26 feet 3 inches, while this garage and second dwelling will reach a height of approximately 19 feet. Access to the property will be gained via an 18-foot wide driveway to the two-car garage that gains access from Pedrone Avenue. And there will be two parking spaces for the main dwelling provided in the garage and a third parking space that meets the requirement for the second dwelling will be perpendicular to the driveway. And you can see here, it's shown behind an evergreen hedge that will screen it from the street. A 36-inch stone wall is proposed along the Jefferson and Pedrone frontages, and where it is adjacent to the backyard, it will have an additional 36 inches of trellis to provide backyard privacy. The proposed landscaping includes a row of flowering shrubs behind the stone wall, a boxwood hedge, jasmine on both trellises, a new tree at the corner, the street corner, and hedges along the north and west interior property lines for privacy. The remainder of the site that isn't devoted to landscape will be finished in lawn. So with the modification to the building height, the proposed structure fully complies with the design ordinance standards, and staff is supportive and recommending approval tonight. We do note that you only have the one elevation for the revised design of the garage. We don't have an elevation for each side, but the applicant indicates it will be similar really in design and feel to the previous design in the main dwelling. And we've included a condition of approval that drawings be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the building permit issuance. And that satisfies our concern that we'll have a chance to look at the drawings before they're submitted for construction. I do also want to mention that we've received email correspondence from one of the neighbors, and they've raised two issues of concern. The first is with the window on the stairwell. Let me go up to that seat and see it. We're looking here at the top-left elevation, and the center portion shows the windows in the stairwell. And their concern is that those windows face their kitchen and that they'll face a loss of privacy. And the email correspondence, they stated that there's goodwill between neighbors, and they think that that can be resolved between them at a future date. I do raise the option that the ZDRB could condition the project to require that the windows be situated above eye level to avoid these privacy impacts, rather than leave the solution open to future resolution between the applicants. That would bring more certainty to it. But I haven't included that as a condition of approval. It's simply mentioned as a talking point for you guys. The neighbor's other concern was the loss of fruit trees on the west elevation. But as you can see from this drawing, the applicant proposes a hedge along that property line, and we really feel that those are expected to mitigate the concerns with the loss of the landscaping. So we are recommending approval tonight with conditions that are included with your packet. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Sandra. Do the commissioners have any questions of staff at the moment? Commissioner Jane?
Jason.
Commissioner Scoggins?
I missed your name the last time.
I will be right.
Yeah. Can you tell me what you would suggest or what your concerns are with this future, a little bit more about the window and the concerns with the window and the future design?
Well, the zoning ordinance does talk about windows and how they should be situated, and there's a preference not to intrude upon the privacy of built properties nearby. They really address that with a minimum separation between structures, and this project not only meets that, it exceeds it, so by...
Is it across the street?
No. It's the interior property line on the north side.
Thank you. Got it.
So it meets the strict requirements of the code, but when a neighbor expresses concern, there is an opportunity to consider other mitigation measures if you feel it's appropriate.
Doesn't sound like the neighbors are pounding on each other's doors to fix it or it sounds like they have some sort of...
The neighbors raised the issue with one another, but in the letter and the email that's in your packet, they've suggested that they think they can come to an agreement between them at a future date, so...
Right. Have you seen this before? Like these kind of...
Yes, but generally, the way that's dealt with is with certainty at a meeting rather than leaving it open to interpretation because they may feel different ways about it.
So will they come back in here and sort it out, or are we going to let them, again...
It would be sorted out amongst themselves.
But that doesn't sound like the best...
It's either sorted out amongst themselves or conditioned as part of this process.
Got it. All right. Commissioner Laz, any questions of staff?
The neighbor on Pedrone, did they raise any, they had the opportunity to voice any concerns they had and they didn't. Is that correct?
The neighbor to the west on Pedrone and to the north on Jefferson are the same neighbor. Two different properties.
Same owner.
Same owner.
Same owner.
Same owner.
Yes.
The neighbor...
Same owner, separate properties.
Got it. Okay. I guess I didn't come in right. It's the next question I have.
So, a quick question on the window. So the fact is, is that the window meets all requirements that the town would require of the window in this location, correct?
Correct.
Very good. And then with the landscaping, the size of this property does not trigger the water-efficient landscape ordinance?
That's correct.
All right. Those are my only questions. So at this time, would the applicant like to step up?
Hi, my name's Barbara Chambers, and I'm the architect, and this is my client's homeowner. Miss Dave, unfortunately I couldn't speak here. Thank you so much for doing this special meeting. I know how hard they are to put together. So I thought I'd start by just, if you would, just take a look at the model we have here and just kind of pass that around. We have a little PowerPoint for you. So...
Just the back.
So our application is really for a very, what I call a petite, a very petite, two-bedroom home for my clients, personal residence, Jim and Susan Clopton. The home, again, is 1,500 square feet, so as you know, that is very small, and a garage and a small, in addition, a very small second unit. The style, we call this contemporary sort of classical house. Buildings are composed of three distinct parts, and we did that so that we could break down the massing being the main two-story portion. I'm not going to start that part yet, but just... Okay. So, and then, so the garage, the second unit, and the main house. And we really tried to break down the massing on that, so you got a really beautiful rhythm to the building on the street. And it was a little challenging because this is a street where you basically need two front entrances. So one is from Jefferson and then the other from Pedrone. And so that's always challenging when you have to have two front entrances to a house rather than a side, a front and a back. So that was kind of funny. We think we solved it successfully. The parking was also of prime importance, and that we brought in from Pedrone. You can see on the model where that's located. And then, of course, we did a fully developed landscaping site plan. So I just wanted to review the drawings really quickly with the PowerPoint. I guess I'll look to the side here because you have it in both views. So the existing topography that's shown here is a 6,000-square-foot site. The buildings we show on there were prior to the houses being demolished, and if you went by there, as you know, those are now demolished. So on the second slide there, we have the view used to be from Pedrone, and then you can see the existing house, neighboring house on the left-hand side. And then this is a view looking the other way. Obviously, these two little houses were taken down.
That's right. Tell the story first.
So, am I right in the way of your...
No, no. No, you're fine.
The former residents, you can see that, they're tired little houses that needed demolition. So those have since been taken down. And you can see the sort of barren landscape there in the site photo number three, and we intend to improve all corners and sides of that beautiful little property. You can see the house to the right, too. So that gives you a little bit of context, just refreshing yourselves in terms of the site. So the site plan and the roof plan, you can start to see the three little volumes we have here, the two-story being to the right and the front and center on the model, I guess it shows the best. And then, of course, we have reversed the massing on the second unit there, which is the middle. So we created a little storage area on top of the second unit, and that's going to be accessed from the garage, that you can access that little area, because as you know, a 1,500-square-foot house is so tiny that there's basically no storage. So we really felt it was important to maintain that storage area above, which we were putting over the garage, but now we've switched to, as Sandra described. So the landscape conceptual plan, you can kind of see what's really important to this site, meaning the Jefferson entrance where we have our main entrance to the property. And the house was therefore oriented in the long axis, and then we wanted to take the parking furthest away from the corner so that it's a most safe condition. And you can see there then how the pool feature is in the middle of those two pieces of structure. So then the floor plans are quite simple. With 1,500 square feet, again, you want to sort of keep everything as open as possible. And then we have two petites, we say petite and small a number of times, because when you have a house that's small, every inch has to be taken advantage of, and so hence we created just big, open spaces. And the same thing on the second unit. So then the streetscape, we're very conscious of the streetscape, and the other reason for the storage area above, which is now above the second unit, is you can see, when you go down the street, we like to keep the rhythm or the fabric of the street sort of intact. So we really felt like a one-story, 15-foot-high structure for the second unit and garage would be really poorly done massing-wise, so that's why we feel it's very important to maintain that storage area over one or the other. Not only that we need the storage on the property, but also that the streetscape has a much nicer, more compatible rhythm as you walk down the street. And you can see right there with the two-story section on the house next door. So you want to have a nice little playful relationship to, which is the historic part of town, which is important to us. The exterior elevations, Sandra covered, I think, quite nicely. We just wanted to show you the materials that we're using. Jenny's the one that pulled these up. This is the stone for the stone base of the house, and then this is the beautiful, sort of white, I'm sorry, white-stained shingle that we have. Oh, sorry about that. And then we have a standing seam metal roof. So again, sort of contemporary classical bones to the property or the buildings, but again, a little bit of a contemporary twist. The next slide is showing the exterior elevations of the garage and the second unit. Again, trying to get a little balance and play between what is a very tall two-story structure to sort of break that massing down with something that's sort of one and a half and then one story. Again, that's sort of a playful way to deal with massing. The sections next are pretty straightforward. We have a building that's 26 feet 6 tall, where 28 is allowed, so well under the height limit, and we feel like the buildings are very complementary to the fabric of the neighborhood. There's a section there of the main residence. That actually section is interesting because it is showing that window condition there, stepping down. So I think Jim and Susan will be able to satisfy the neighbor's concerns in maybe shortening the sill height or something, but I think we'll leave that to the two of you, Jim, the neighbor.
I'm probably going to have a plantation shutter on it anyway, but...
One second. If you're going to speak, we need to hear you up at the microphone so everybody watching at home can hear you too, Mr. Clubman.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's all right. It's fine.
Just to comment on...
But to the microphone, so everybody at home can hear you as well. No problem.
Just two points on that. My wife met with the neighbors that own that house that, you know, that addresses the window concern. And also, the neighbors across the street on Jefferson, the ones behind those large redwood trees, they were there as well. At the time of the meeting, they said, you know, "We sign off on everything. It's great. Everything's fine, and, you know, this is a tight neighborhood. We understand that, you know, there's always going to be a window looking out on something." And, you know, "We want the privacy just as much as they do." So we'll probably, we hope, we love to have great relationships with our neighbors, and we wouldn't want to do anything as minor as this, quite frankly, to, you know, disrupt that, you know, kind of relationship. So, you know, it's easy to say that, trust me, it's going to be fine, but, you know, I think it's in everybody's best interest that we do make sure that we're not peering into their kitchen while going up the stairs.
Okay. And then almost lastly are the sections of the garage building. And then, again, the model, which, the model slides, which are easier to look actually at the real model. So we feel like we've done a nice job responding to this beautiful site in the historic part of your beautiful town. I just enjoyed driving down the main street as I came in, and we're very pleased to present our proposal and hope you can support it. And so if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commissioners for the... Jason? Commissioner Scoggins?
None for me.
Commissioner Laz? No? Nor do I. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And my client may have...
Yeah, definitely. We'll call him up. And if, please, Mr. Clubman, if you have any additional comments, we'd love to hear from you.
Great. Yes, thanks. One thing that got my attention, Sandra, when you did the kind of overview of the dimensions of the property, I thought I heard you say that, you mentioned 18 feet rather than 15 feet? And I was just wondering if I heard you incorrectly, or perhaps there could be a possibility of raising the 15-foot to 18 feet and then going from 18 feet to 20 feet. And if I heard you incorrectly, I apologize. I just...
The zoning ordinance requires a 20-foot rear yard setback and an eight-foot side yard setback for 15 feet and taller, so...
Oh, I thought I heard you say 18 feet and taller. So it is 15 feet? Okay, okay, okay. So that's fine. That's fine on that. Just trying to think if there's, I don't think that there's anything else. I was, maybe that was just wishful listening.
Thank you, Mr. Club. So are there any other questions, or shall we close the public comment? Very good. So we'll close the public comment, and I'll now turn to Commissioner Scoggins to get your feedback.
My feedback is this is a vast improvement to what was formerly on that corner, although I'm not in the radius clause that these folks are. We're, I'm on Adams Street down the way from you, so walk by that corner all the time. I think the plans look great, and as long as the staff is supporting all these conditions or has raised these conditions and you guys are comfortable with all the conditions, I feel like I can fully support this plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Laz, any thoughts or comments?
I agree. It's a great improvement as to what it was. The only question I had was, in a previous time that we reviewed, the issue came up regarding the sidewalk or the entry having a front sidewalk from the street, and I see that this one doesn't, so I just wanted to make sure, or I guess block out the confusion that it's not required in keeping with the look of the historic town feel, if that makes sense. What are you talking about?
Yeah. This actually has a front entry on Jefferson, and you see the entry here from the north side of the Jefferson elevation coming into the front porch, and on either side of that, I'll go to...
Got it.
I was going to take you to an elevation, sorry. Darn wrong one. Hold on one sec. So seen here on the lower right-hand illustration, either of these two doors would function as a front door.
Okay. With the, I see with the sidewalk on the right.
But the wraparound porch does continue to the south elevation, and this center door here could also function in that way. We're satisfied that this has been oriented to the street and it doesn't close off access, mainly because of the path from the street in a way it's a dramatic entry.
Jefferson side. Okay. Got it.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a statement that given either, neither of yours' concerns about the window, that we'll be able to move past that and let the neighbors deal with that situation, seeing whereas the window does comply with all of the standards for the town. My only concern, and I'd like to base everything on fact and finding, so I'll make a personal statement. My only concern is that although this property does not, is not large enough to trigger the water-efficient landscape ordinance that it is 2014 in the state of California, and it'd be really nice that some future thought would be given to the landscaping as well in terms of the amount of grass on the property. But everything else, I agree with my commissioners as well. It's a great property for Old Town, Youngville as well. We usually close it off, but we're a small town. We're more than happy to let you come back up. We can change the rules a little bit, Mr. Club.
I just wanted to add one thing, that the lawn area actually is going to be just around the pool, and there'll be stepping stones that are not placed in the lawn right now, so that'll take up, you know, a fair amount of the lawn. And also, then there's going to be just quite a bit of gravel, you know, for, to address that water sensitivity.
Great. I appreciate the comment. Thank you very much. So with all that being said, would one of the commissioners like to make a motion for this project?
I'll make a motion that we approve the project with the, based on the plan and based on the, I'm looking for my, thank you, and based on the conditions. Do I need to go through all of them, Sandra?
No.
Okay.
So, any other discussion? We have a motion then? All those in favor of approving the project with the proposed conditions of approval, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Excellent. Your plan's been approved. Thank you very much.
Pool party invitations will be in the meeting. And I just also wanted to thank you guys for being available, you know, during a non-specified time to have this meeting.
You bet.
Really appreciate it.
You showed up when you were supposed to, so it's not a problem at all. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right. With that being said, we shall move on to public hearing 7.2, Design Review and Use Permit, the Carmichael Garage at 6640 Jefferson Street. And again, I will state that this is within my sphere of conflict, but in order to move forward with the project and with three of us here, I will remain on. So with that being said, Sandra, please.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you design review for the second dwelling and garage.
But in order to move forward with the project and with three of us here, um, I will remain on. So with that being said, Sandra, please.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you design review, um, for the second dwelling and garage, but also use permit for proposed tandem parking. And as you can see on the left-hand side of this slide, the parcel is a large irregular-shaped parcel. And toward the rear, there is a 62-foot-long by 26-foot-wide pocket at that northwest corner, and that's the area proposed for development. The parcel is developed with an existing 850-square-foot primary dwelling and an existing 260-square-foot detached garage. And the applicant proposes to raise the garage for a new driveway approach that would access the pocket at the property's northeast corner. The applicant proposes a new 255-square-foot single family, I'm sorry, single-car garage and an attached 600-square-foot second dwelling. And the west finishes of this new building have been designed to match the existing building. And they include cement fiber shingle siding, a divided light wood entry door to the second dwelling, a hipped roof with modified gable ends above both the garage and the entry to the second dwelling. And it will be painted light green with white trim and windows, asphalt shingles and a roofline with an eight-and-12 pitch. The side and rear elevations will transition to stucco siding and a smooth sand finish with a combination of window types and a more simplified gable roofline. But these sides are also designed to match the main dwelling in terms of color and materials otherwise. The structure will be set back five feet from the side property lines. And as you can tell, it's, um, really snug in that back corner and there's no more than five feet that could be devoted to those, um, setbacks to accommodate the garage and the dwelling. And at this, uh, at this setback, the building is required to be 15 feet in height. The applicant is requesting a building of 15 feet 8 inches, and that's part of the proposal before you tonight. Access to the new garage will be gained by a new 12-foot-wide driveway that will widen to 20 feet by the time it reaches the main home. And this is for the purpose of providing two surface-level tandem parking spaces to, to meet the three-car parking demand for the property. The pavers on the driveway will be set in sand for a permeable surface and they are the same pavers that are used on the walkway to the main dwelling. A 36-inch-tall wrought iron gate is proposed for the mouth of the driveway and it will match the existing, um, front yard perimeter fence. This fence, um, will be on a, um, automatic sensor to open inward when cars approach. There is some simple landscaping proposed, including rosebushes that will walk, line the walkway to the front porch, lavender that will surround the base of the palms and sianthus, um, as an accent element. So with the exception of the height, the proposal before you complies with the zoning and design ordinance standards. Um, and rather than decrease the height of the building, the applicant is seeking approval of a variance. And he states the reason is because, um, he would like to build a foundation above grade because of the proximity of this site to the creek. And it is just, um, two property, one property separated from the creek. I do note, though, that while it is near Hopper Creek, it's not situated in an area that's classified a flood zone by FEMA. And the additional height is not strictly necessary to reduce risk. And so this makes it difficult to meet the very strict variance findings that we need to make, um, in order to determine that this property owner suffers, um, an undue hardship, or that this, the grant of 8 inches will not be a grant of special privilege because other property owners are held to the same standard. I do note, however, that in terms of some of the findings that, um, talks about whether it's detrimental or injurious to adjoining properties and in compliance with the general plan, um, it is considered a minimus, we're only talking 8 inches. There are also several, um, non-conforming structures in and around the area that exceed the, the 15 feet. But when we look at a new building, they're generally held to the current standards. So, um, I think it would be difficult, if not impossible, to make these findings. And we are recommending that it be reduced in height by 8 inches. Another discussion in the staff report, uh, is in regards to the parking standards. And I know that there are certain properties that justify tandem parking, especially in Old Town where you have a narrow property. In this case, we have a property that's developed with a structure that's on the historic index. There's only 26 feet between edge of building and the north property line. That alone is not wide enough for a two-car garage where each vehicle can be independently accessible and maintain the setbacks and the separation between buildings. So it's pretty much the only option on a parcel like this. And we have a very long driveway that can accommodate the cars. They're screened from the street, um, and we find it's reasonable and we're recommending approval of the, the use permit for tandem parking, as well as design review for the garage and second dwelling. But we are, we have included a condition that it be reduced to 15 feet.
Thank you very much, Sandra. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Laz? Commissioner Skoggins?
None at this time.
Thank you. I do not either, so with that, we will open it to the applicant to come up and speak.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here on a special meeting, I appreciate it. And I've reconsidered the 15-feet height since we spoke last and I have a solution to get me there. It would be minor and I don't think it would make a difference to anybody, I don't even think you would even notice it. If I drop my roof pitch from an eight-and-12 to a seven-and-12 pitch, that will drop me 8 inches at the, at the center of the apex of the roof. It's 8 feet wide, 1 inch by 7-inch rise, 8 feet rise, that'll give me the 8 inches. So if you allow me to drop the roof pitch, which I don't think will even be noticeable by anybody, I will accommodate the 15 feet.
Excellent. Any questions from, uh, commissioners to Mr. Carmichael? Commissioner Laz, no? Commissioner Skoggins? No?
No, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carmichael. And, uh, any other one in the audience want to comment on this project? No? Thank you very much. Then we shall close this, um, for the public comment and discuss here. And I apologize, I've got a question, uh, that I did not ask earlier. The second email that you included, um, excuse me, the email that you sent us with the updates with the second email from, uh, Mr. Knight, I was confused as to exactly what the nature of that was.
It seemed as if it was a general letter of support.
Okay.
For the applicant's project.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sorry. So with that, Commissioner Laz, uh, any thoughts on this project?
No, and coming up with the solution to lower your, um, dwelling to the required height of current standards, I think, um, I think it's great. It's needed, I think the driveway works, um, and I think you do have to go tandem with that. And as long as it's behind the lines of, um, the gated entry that you have, I think it's fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Skoggins?
I wasn't looking at you when he was proposing his new roof height. Is that, are we comfortable with that?
I think it's a good solution to the height issue. I simply note it's at a different roof pitch than the main dwelling, but we're talking about a building that's set 80 feet back from street.
Back.
And, uh, it's almost better that it doesn't mimic entirely the other dwelling since it is historic, so I have no problem with the seven-and-12.
And I agree with the other commissioner that the tandem is probably the only option for that, and I know parking on that street is challenging. So, the more you can get cars into the driveway, the better.
And I, I greatly appreciate the applicant, um, willing to make the change, 'cause I've, I believe that my father was a contractor, always bristled at variances, so I, uh, I, I think this is great. So with that being said, would, uh, would the commissioners like to make a motion?
I will make the motion that, uh, from eight and a half to.
Yeah, that we, um, accept the new and/or incorporate the new, um, solution for the variance, um, from eight and a half to seven and a half. And that we, um, we, uh, with the conditions, um, all being met and approved by the, or agreed to by the, the applicant, that we, I, I would make a motion that we approve this, this plan.
Very good. Any other discussion? A second? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed, so unanimous. Your proposal, your project's been approved, so thank you very much, Mr. Carmichael.
Mr. Carmichael, can you answer a question for me?
Um, and might you step up just so we can all hear your answer?
Well, it's off the record, really. Did you bring those palm trees in or were they always there?
No, they were always there. I cleaned them up.
Good God, that's amazing. I never noticed those until you started doing all that work there.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's funny.
We've, uh, worked hard on the project.
Yeah, it looks good.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to go for the variance, but I figured it would be better if I just complied.
Well, uh, we, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, because we didn't wanna have to have a rough night.
That's why you're out of here at 6:40.
Exactly.
Very good. So, no, uh, no staff, staff and board reports for this week?
No.
We took care of that when you were gone.
Nothing in addition.
Alright, alright. Don't make me bring up any other issues, Commissioner Skoggins, thank you very much.
No, I'm on the hot seat.
So with that being said, we will, uh, adjourn to the next regular meeting, uh, for the ZDRB scheduled August 12th, 2014. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Excellent. We will see you all in August. Thank you.
Thanks.